All right, everybody, it is six o'clock, so I will call this meeting to order. With no further ado, can I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, scurried. We have one set of minutes from February the 5th. Could I have a motion to adopt? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, scurried. We'll move right into public participation, our first public participation. Chris.
Good evening, your worship. Good evening, honorable chairperson. I'm Chris Wright. I reside at Mary Ann Crescent. I wanted to touch on something with regard to the agenda. I noticed this time it was released at about four o'clock on Friday afternoon, and I checked bylaw 754, section 20B, that says that an agenda has to be released about 72, no less than 72 hours before a meeting starts. And I just wanted to comment that it has been 74 hours, but during that 74 hours, it doesn't allow for a lot of time for people to actually read through it, considering how much information is contained in this budget. So I would like to request, if it's at all possible, honorable chairperson, that maybe the Wednesday before the meeting would be a better target for city staff to be shooting for, to give people time to think about things, maybe contact a counselor to receive some clarification on issues. In this case, if there's errors noted in the agenda attachments, it's always nice to pass that along to city staff before the meeting has occurred. And I think if people look through this evening's attachment, they'll find some mistakes. And I don't think it's really fair to city staff to not have the chance to fix things in advance. So I'd just like to offer that. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Anybody else this round? Seeing none, we'll go right into new business. Five point one, a budget process overview from our Director of Finance, Christopher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and delighted to be here today. And welcome to our regular customers and the public. And on that note, thank you, Mr. Wright. I wanted to draw council's attention and the public's attention to the revised operating budgets that have been printed and distributed to you folks and are available with the agenda. There were some arithmetic mistakes on the original version that was published with the agenda, so I do sincerely apologize for that. And if the folks in the gallery would like to follow along, that's going to be the version that we are going to look at today. So I'm just going to begin today with a quick recap of the budget process, where we're at, where we're heading. And then we're going to launch right into some of our third-party presentations, the folks from the library here to present, as well as the folks from the West Shore Parks and Rec Society, so looking forward to their presentation. So these were some of the dates that we had proposed for the budget discussions. February 5th has come and gone, and we discussed the mid-finance, IT, fire, policing, building bylaw, and the planning operating budgets. And for the remainder of the operating budgets, we're going to launch in today excluding engineering. Unfortunately, our Director of Engineering is not able to be with us today, so we've opted to defer that operating budget to our next committee of the whole. As you're likely aware, the next committee of the whole was originally scheduled for February 20th, but again, the content of that really requires the presence of our Director of Engineering, so it's been deferred to February 27th. So February 27th, we'll discuss capital and our asset management plans, as well as the engineering operating budget. And then hopefully, knock on wood, we don't have any further hiccups. We can wrap up on March 5th, look at the budget as a whole, see a preview to the financial plan bylaw, and look for notional approval from the committee as a recommendation to So just to discuss some items that we touched on just briefly at the beginning of the operating budget presentation last week. Some of the cost pressures that are driving some of the increases this year are labor increases, expected or actually incurred, fire dispatch costs, and the expected election costs that are going to occur this year. Those pressures are mitigated by some core savings, so we are experiencing some reduced WorkSafe BC premiums, as well as MSP premiums. There are some savings from mobile device contract savings. And there's also some increased revenues, which we'll discuss at the March 5th meeting, when we look at an overview of the entire operating budget. So overall, the financial plan as it stands right now is recommending a 1.3% tax increase. Core budgets, core budget increases is about $174,000, and that doesn't include new operating budget items that are a result of community growth. So we recommend that those core budget items be funded by taxes. We are anticipating new construction revenue. Currently, as it stands, it's $495,000. That can and will likely change when we get a revised assessment, and that will come to the city in early March. There usually will be a reduction in how much our construction revenue. I don't anticipate the risk of a reduction being too large, but will likely be reduced somewhat. And staff are recommending use of that non-market change revenue in the following ways. We're recommending approximately $265,000 be used for and to fund those new operating budget items that are a result of growth. Most, I think all of them actually were discussed last meeting, and they result in new operating budget items. And then the remaining, we're recommending that the remaining of the non-market change revenue, new construction revenue, as I've termed it here, be used to increase our sustainable, our annual increase for two infrastructure deficit, for sustainable replacement of our infrastructure. And that increase would ensure that there's an increase to our transferred reserve that remains there from year to year. Again, with the principal approach to it being that an increase in our community will come with it increased obligation to replace infrastructure in the future. So it's a principled and best practices approach to the use of the non-market change revenue, which can be inconsistent in the region. So much like presented before, there's approximately $1.1 million recommended in special projects. Those are funded almost entirely by surplus, except for affordable housing contribution. $2.5 million for capital, which will be almost entirely funded from our reserves. And with that, we have $100,000 increase in overall to our transferred reserves, although there is an increase to our sustainable transferred reserves, which we'll discuss at the March 5th meeting. So there have been some substantive changes. As I mentioned, I think in the haste to redefine and come up with a different way of presenting our budget, there has been some arithmetic mistakes, some grammar and spelling and what have you. So we're going through a number of versions, and we're making sure that we're labeling those versions correctly on the website. Right now, you'll see version two. Prior to the February 27th meeting, we'll have version three posted on the website in the same timing as it's on the agenda. And hopefully, the vast majority, if not all, of those little errors are resolved by then, and the big picture is absolutely complete by then. So some of the substantive changes that the folks in the, in the public might notice and council might notice is metal park electrical upgrades have been added to the capital schedule, rock face monitoring has been added to the special project schedule, and the Latorre Creek stairway capital will be added to the capital schedule as well, again. And again, these are well-funded projects by reserve, so they don't impact the overall tax increase that's being proposed whatsoever. And I can already tell you in anticipation of version three that there will be a couple equipment replacement, one vehicle or one equipment that will also show up in version three that aren't, that don't exist in version two at the moment. Again, well-funded with our equipment replacement fund. So I'm going to leave it at that. Look to the committee if they have any questions. And absent of any questions, we'll launch into the public library presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we come to committee, the public have any questions for the director? Committee? Rob and Jason?
I have two quick questions for you. The first is, do you know how much, you mentioned about cost pressures, the election 2018. How much are we anticipating, or how much are we budgeting for that election?
Through Mr. Chair, it's approximately $25,000 plus a couple incidentals, so about $27,000 in addition to our normal operating.
And does the province ever help with any of that? They just, it's all our responsibility?
Not that I'm aware, although they did change the legislation, so you know, so for years, which does reduce the pressure a little bit.
Right. And then through the chair, one final question. So when you were talking about the $2.5 million capital for roads, fleet equipment, software, and others, that sounded like that was coming out of reserves, but then your third line said $100,000K would be increased in transferred to reserves. So can you clarify for me, are you talking about it's a $100,000 increase from last year, or are you talking that it's grown by $100,000?
Through the chair. So the transfer to reserves is connected, but separate from the transfer from reserves. So the transfer from reserves is what supports and funds our capital expenditures. The transfer to reserves are how much we put aside every year in anticipation of future capital costs. So what I said, what I meant by that bullet is that overall, our transfers to reserves in this budget are $100,000 more than they were in last year's budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
I had one quick question. You mentioned that the new construction revenue may be reduced after revised assessment. I assume we would be reducing then the transfer to infrastructure deficit reserves and not operating?
Through the chair. That would be the most, it's really, it is up to council, and that's one of the options that would be recommended. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I was just concerned, because if we pulled it out of operating budget, that means a higher tax increase.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing any further speakers or questions, we'll move right into our presentation from the Greater Victoria Public Library. We have Maureen Sawa, the Chief Executive Officer, Paul McKinnon, the Director of Finance and Facilities, and Deborah Begore, the Vice, Begore? Begore, sorry, thank you. The Vice Chair of the Greater Victoria Public Library Board.
I'm not here to do anything really important. Hi, well, this is my first time in the Callwood Municipal Hall, so I'm very pleased to be here. So good evening to Mayor Hamilton and council members and staff. Thank you for inviting us to present our 2018 final budget. My name is Deborah Begore. I'm the Vice Chair of the Greater Victoria Public Library Board. And with me to present today is our CEO, Maureen Sawa, our Director of Finance and Facilities, Paul McKinnon. And I'm also pleased to introduce additional staff who are here with us this evening, Jennifer Winddecker, who is the Director of Public Service, and Andrea Brummel, District Coordinator of West Shore. I'd like to recognize Councilor Rob Martin, who's your council representative on the Greater Victoria Library Board, and personally, I find him to be a wonderful chair, and you certainly represent Callwood very well on that, on that board. The commitment of all our board, council trustees, past and present, to represent their constituents is significant, and as Vice Chair, I'm deeply impressed and grateful for all their insights and perspectives. You've received our final budget package. The library board and staff have worked hard to develop a budget for 2018 that is realistic and resourceful. I would like to express my thanks to your council for your continued support. By increasing the accessibility and impact of library service, GVPL is living up to its vision, your place to connect, discover, and imagine. And now I'll turn things over to Maureen for the remainder of this presentation, and Maureen, Paul, and I look forward to responding to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah, and thank you, everyone, for welcoming us back. It's always a pleasure to come to Callwood and kind of talk about what's new and exciting at GVPL. As you can see on the screen, this is our strategic plan, and last year, we embarked on the second year of our five-year strategic plan to provide community-inspired library service, along with a business plan that will measure our progress as we move forward to fulfill our mission to build community and support literacy and lifelong learning by providing free access to information-based tools and expertise. There are so many things that I could talk to you about tonight, but in the interest of time, I'll try and be concise. Here is a little bit of an indicator of how busy we've been, GVPL by the numbers. We have incredible depth and reach in the community with more than 100 partnerships and outreach activities spanning health, education, literacy, economic development, arts and culture, social service, indigenous and environmental groups. So you can see the library system activity on this slide for 2017, and these statistics really tell the story. No wonder we continue to be the library system with the highest per capita circulation numbers in Canada, according to the Canadian Urban Library Council. Looking ahead, our library system as a whole will soon be enhanced with the addition of our 12th branch in James Bay, the Schwenho Ton Ho James Bay Branch. And one of these days, I'm going to get it right, but I'm getting close. This new location will feature a collection that floats, and that means that the materials will be available not just in James Bay, but for all of the libraries in our system, and it greatly expands our resources. We're looking forward to a grand opening celebration in late spring, and hopefully, we're going to have a date for that fairly soon. GVPL really is a launchpad for literacy. It expands the library's reach through engagement. We inspire creativity and opportunities to learn through our collections and programs. We had pop-up libraries in Callwood in 2017. We popped up at Callwood Eats and Beats at the Beach, and again, at the Callwood Seaside Festival. We partnered with the Island Health Seniors Outpatient Link to offer Boost Your Brain Power, which was a nine-week course focusing on supporting brain health and exploring topics such as brain anatomy, brain exercises, et cetera. It created a lot of interest and was fully registered. We also did our seed library, hosted a seed library member orientation in Callwood last year, and offered a seed swap, as well as a beginner seed saving workshop. We worked, we partnered with Life Cycle Society to present a seed library on life cycles, was particularly pleased to offer events in the West Shore this year. I think, hopefully, some of you have discovered our new virtual branch. This is a new mobile library, mobile-friendly website that was launched in August 2017. We're really, really proud of this website. We were able to develop a whole new website with a pretty modest investment of about $20,000, and it was primarily funded through Friends of the Library, who provided us with the seed money to do this, and then it was internally developed. But as a result of this new system, it's actually a new branch for the entire system, features a new learning platform, lynda.com, a new streaming music collection. We've much more improved our library card application tool, and the whole thing, as you all know, mobile devices are what everyone is looking to use, but the fact that we were able to do this, you know, with very minimal costs, we're very proud of that. Certainly, at the Wanda Fuka branch, we support digital literacy through our public computers. We have access to high-speed Wi-Fi, do a number of one-on-one computer assistance sessions. According to the numbers, there were 14,127 public computer sessions at the Wanda Fuka branch last year. In terms of continuing our commitment to a strong reading culture in Callwood, our summer reading program this year attracted over 8,000 children. This really is important. It helps kids avoid the summer slump, which is a time when reading levels could slide between the end of one school year and the beginning of the next. We're also active connectors with local schools. GVPL staff participate in the Family and Early Childhood Resource Network and Your Literacy Connection West Shore. And we're really proud of these collaborations, because it means by sharing our expertise and experience, not just the library, but our partner groups, we can really move forward a community-inspired service model and support literacy in the, in the Callwood community. So in terms of the budget, as Deborah mentioned, you do have the package in front of you. There are three main drivers. This, obviously, the first one, the largest, being salaries and benefits. Building occupancy costs continue to rise while fine revenue continues to decrease. And I always say this, but it's true, we do such a good job of reminding people to return their, their materials, that people are returning them on time. And also, the increased use of electronic resources means that there are no overdue charges on electronic resources, because they just disappear when it's time to return them. I think that you'll all agree that our increased usage does contribute in terms of budget pressures. We had 6.6 million visits in 2017. Many of them were virtual, but we circulated over 5 million items, and the growing popularity of e-materials means that our software costs licensing and dealing with the US dollar is having an impact on our budget. But these unavoidable costs do go hand in hand with improved services. As I mentioned, the new website, we've added Digilab, and we've done quite a lot with our truth and reconciliation responses. Before I talk specifically about budget savers, I'm very anxious to see what happens with the provincial budget tomorrow. We, members of our board, Vice Chair and others, have done a lot of lobbying with our local ministers to reinstate the budget line for libraries and the provincial budget, and also have had fairly positive feedback, not just locally, but provincially, in terms of looking at the budget that has been flat for the past 10 years and looking at a cost of, cost of living increase. So that's something that we are hopeful for. But in terms of budget savers, we've done a lot of realignments of space and staff to meet changing user needs. And I think it's important to note that we are staffing the branch in James Bay through a realignment of staffing funds. So in 2018, this did not have any impact on the budget. We were able to kind of cover that branch with existing positions. And as I mentioned, the website savings really did give us a whole new branch. We saved dollars by reallocation of resources. We moved our administrative center from leased space back to the central library, which saved us considerable dollars. And in terms of the innovation, I've mentioned the floating collection, that ensures that collections are continually refreshed and shared across the region. And collaboration, again, that's one of the things that I could spend a lot of time talking about tonight, but our partnerships really do drive our service, and we're very, very fortunate that we have so many active partnerships that we are continually to develop. So in terms of the 2018 budget, it is aligned with our strategic plan and corresponding business plan. We are requesting a 2.990% increase. I have to stress that our Finance Committee of the Board has put our budget under quite a lot of scrutiny, so by the time it gets finalized to the full board, it's been really quite reviewed and sent back to staff, so that we have the best version that we can possibly provide you. This budget does, is a maintenance budget. It maintains equitable access to service and programs that make a difference in the life of residents. In terms of the Callwood contribution, I should just point out that, just following Chris's lead, there was a, there was a flip in the columns in the package that you received, so the shot that you're looking at is the correct amount. So it represents a 1.40 percentage increase from last year, and that would be a cost per capita increase of 61 cents. So finally, I'd like to leave things with the quote, this is a really wonderful quote, I think, for Greater Victoria, sums up how we feel libraries serve all of our residents. "A library in the middle of a community is a cross between an emergency exit, a life raft, and a festival. They are cathedrals of the mind, hospitals of the soul, theme parks of the imagination. On a cold, rainy island, they are the only sheltered public spaces where you are not a consumer, but a citizen instead." So on that note, I'd like to thank you for your attention, and then Paul and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Before that, we'll, yeah, Chris, you had a question?
Great minds think alike. Thank you. Almost feels like a talk show host. Of course, my computers.
That's okay.
There we go. Okay, so on the slide that you had that showed the per capita costs, is the information available for the median-valued house in Callwood? Because when I pay my library tax, as much as I would really like to, I don't get to pay it on a per capita basis. So do you have that info?
Sorry, oh, yeah, if you could just, we're recording it as well, just so we have some...
I don't have that information right in front of me, but I'm happy to see if we can provide that information as requested. It's just not something I would have in front of me, so.
You can tell that I would fail miserably as a news interviewer. And my final comment is a suggestion, actually, to the board. So currently, the board meets, what is it, the last Friday of every month downtown?
Are you talking about the library board?
Yeah.
The fourth Tuesday.
All right, so they meet downtown at noon. So I'd like to suggest that in order to increase public interest and involvement, that the board consider meeting in the evenings and rotate from city to city that the library is involved in, so we could see the board have a meeting here in the city of Callwood, and members of the public could attend and become involved.
We've certainly looked at rotating locations. I think that's a really, really good idea. I'll just say that evening board meetings with 19 people on our board representing 10 different municipalities, that is a challenge, because we have 10 councillor reps on our board, which means 10 different council meetings that they're engaged with as well. So it's certainly something that we'll take back to the board for consideration, though. Thank you, and I agree with you about moving locations. Good.
Cool, thanks, because, I mean, for me to attend right now would take about two and a half hours out of my day. So, and I don't think members of the public are inclined to do that. But, thank you. And by the way, wonderful presentation this evening. So much more detailed than last year. It's definitely appreciated.
You asked a lot of questions last year.
I can ask more now, if you like.
No, it's okay, but I think that did have some impact.
I came armed.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Chris. Christopher, did you have a question?
I was just going to note that the taxpayer impacted, Mr. Wright requested information on is, is less than $2 for the average single-family home for the increase that the library is requesting.
Any further questions before we come to committee? Not seeing none, committee? Cynthia?
Thank you. I understand that recently, all of the library branches, at least that I know of in the West Shore, participated in the Rick Hansen accessibility audits, and I'm wondering if any upgrades are included perhaps in the capital expenses other column that's listed, or is there a plan to move forward with some improvements at any of our branches as a result of those accessibility audits?
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, thanks.
We're still waiting for the results, the cumulative results, from the, from the studies in terms of looking at the different branches within the system. GVPL always has funds available through our reserves, in which case, if there is recommendations made that we feel will be prudent, we can fund those, depending on the cost of, but we're reviewing what's coming in currently to see what would be required, if anything.
Okay, I can just give you the feedback directly from the intermunicipal advisory committee on disability issues, who have concerns about access issues at all three of the West Shore branches particularly, and especially concerns with regard to access to transit at the Heritage Branch. I know there's changes coming there, so totally willing to be patient, but we would like to ask that you include the disabilities committee in any audits or priority ratings that you choose to do, because we have people with lived experience who'd be very happy to give you some pointers that might really help to make the changes that you do make, the most possibly effective ones. And also, just really great presentation, but I would really love to see some disabilities represented in your pictures, and it's something I've been nagging everybody about, you're not unique, but it's a very important resource for seniors, people with disabilities, who are often on fixed incomes. This is one of the places where they go, and I'm sure you know, and I think that that's a highlight and one of the great things about the library.
Yeah, those are really good comments. I appreciate that very much. Like, every year, we kind of refine this presentation and try and put some tweaks in, but that definitely, that's a very good comment. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Anything further? Seeing none? Christopher, I'm not assuming we need a motion at this point. Presentation, perfect. Thank you very much for taking the time to come out and address council. That was a really good presentation.
Thank you for letting us come and talk to you. Thank you very much. Thanks.
And our condolences, if you have to put up with us.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was fine with the photos in tonight's slides.
We just got to get your walker in there.
Thank you. All right, next up is a presentation from the West Shore Parks and Recreation Society, Sandy Clark, Acting Administrator, and Grant Brown, Manager of Finance. Welcome.
My understanding was...
I think, my understanding was... My understanding was we had a lawyer write a letter, because I had previously cleared a conflict of interest, and that we had to get a letter saying that that conflict no longer exists, and that we were safe. So I know that letter's on file, so as long as, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Sandy Clark. I'm the acting administrator for West Shore Parks and Recreation. And with me is Grant Brown, the manager of finance. Both of us have been in our positions about six months, so Grant even less, so we will do our best. We wanted to start by, just a sec, there we go. I wanted to start by laying out a little bit of background, because we're, this is actually our second budget presentation, or second, yeah, presentation. So in November of 2017, we submitted a draft budget, which was sent to all member councils of West Shore Parks and Recreation, and it reflected a 4.15 increase in requisitions. And in December of 2017, a members' meeting was held that resulted in a motion being passed to hold the requisition dollars at a zero increase for 2018. And this motion was passed by all members of the society. So just to put that into context, the board of West Shore Parks and Recreation, there was a motion put forward in October that asked the board chair to try and facilitate a meeting of all members. That meeting was held in December. There was two motions made that day. One was around budget, and one was around the consultant's review, both with the understanding that the motions would proceed forward to the respective councils for approval. I just wanted to sort of put some context in there. I don't know if I've got my buttons right. Oh, there we go. Further to the background, the, this, so holding the requisitions at zero increase will result in requisition dollars being held since 2016, and will result in a budget shortfall of $206,445 for 2018. There's a further shortfall of $21,406 with the withdrawal of the electoral district from West Shore Parks and Recreation as of January 1st, 2018. So the total budget shortfall of $227,851 would be transferred from the reserve to adjust for the budget shortfall, as stated in the motion that day of December. A note about the society reserve, the reserve transfer will only occur if needed, so if revenues are exceeded or expenses are reduced during the course of the year, the total number of dollars required from the reserve transfer will decrease. With regards to the reserve held by the society, it's currently projected to be 2.145,419 million at the end of 2017. We were asked to confirm with KPMGR auditors, and they have, that under the not-for-profit rules, the reserve funded by surplus is maintained and owned by the society. Further to that, the members' agreement was amended in 2007 to amend the definition of capital costs and to add the paragraph, "payments to be made to a capital reserve and equipment reserve fund established by the society." Grant is going to give you an overview of the expenses.
Thank you. So for 2018, it's a small increase that's being asked, 0.3% or $31,439 over the 2017 approved, or proposed budget. This includes estimates in the wage increase for the collective bargaining, utility increases, and an increase in the major repairs and maintenance in contrast to 2017. This came out of the board, it was very clear from them that there's a concern that we're not, that we're keeping up and maintaining the equipment and the facilities and so on at the best, at the best level. In the next page, I'll go over some of the details on what makes that up. And then, one of the major hits that occurred to us was in revenue, was a drop of 1.8% versus 2017's proposed budget. And a lot of this has been related to drop in admissions, and so this occurred in 2016 as well, with the opening of the Y, as far as pool and fitness admissions were starting to drop as there was people trying out the new facility. The great news is so far for January of this year, there's been a sharp increase in both pass sales and general admissions at West Shore, so people are starting to drift back, as well as school, or youth swimming lessons are doing quite strong as well, so a lot of that is starting to pick back up. Other areas were right on par with what was expected as far as arena rentals and field rentals and so on. The increases on the expense side included utilities of $30,000, expected QP wage increases for 2017 and 2018, because there's the retroactive aspect of that. We built in 1% into both 2017 and 2018 for wages, and another 1.5% was put into our administration contingency to deal with that, so for a total of 3.5% is built into the budget. To help offset some of those reduced revenues that we're seeing, we've made some changes to operations. For a reduction of $95,000, this included $25,000 in a reduction of combining the fitness and aquatic coordinator positions, which was done in operations during 2018, or 2017, sorry, and just carried forward into 2018. $40,000 reduction in daytime auxiliary wages and maintenance, and a $30,000 reduction in parks seasonal work and auxiliary as well. No full-time positions are being, regular positions are being affected by this. We also reduced our expenditure budget for both staff training, legal, and school district lease payments, as far as usage has gone down. And we made sure that, as mentioned, that the major repairs and maintenance expenditures have been maintained at the highest level to ensure that we're maintaining our facilities and equipment, as what is expected. Came up when we met with the regional CFOs, as well as, we do have a 25-year lifecycle for the facilities. That was created a number of years ago. The five-year plan that came out in the budget package is a snapshot of the next five years of that. So there is a plan that's been put together as far as looking at what is coming up to try to plan for that. That is something that there is some concern down the road, that there's not, it isn't funded to the full ability that it needs to be, and that's something that we're wanting to work forward, moving on, is trying to create some sort of dedicated expenditures going to fund those for the future. We have scheduled annual shutdowns on all our spaces, indoor and outdoor, to ensure that proper maintenance is done and nothing falls behind. And these are just some comparatives that we took the board as well, just to give you guys some ideas on what the costs are for Parks and Recreation around the region. Now, the one thing, if they're West Shore, it's not a perfect example, because individual municipalities are also going to have Parks and Recreation potential budgets that are not included, are, only, all that's included on the West Shore side is just the West Shore Parks and Recreation Society budget. But as you can see, it's quite low compared to a lot of the other municipalities, but just to give you a comparison. And the next one is the comparison of the proposed 2018 requisition that was held at 2016 levels, per capita, through the five different older municipalities, to see what's being charged per capita. That is it. Any questions?
Great. Thank you, Grant. I'll open it up to the public.
So I have two lines of questioning, and then, Mr. Chairman, is there a contingency funding plan in place for West Shore Parks and Recreation if a municipality decides to withdraw from it?
Through the chair. Yes and no. It's a difficult, difficult question to answer yes or no to. Our budget itself recommends an increase to the funding envelope for recreation. So despite the fact that the West Shore Park and Rec Society has brought forward a budget request that keeps requisitions flat, our funding envelope has increased 2.6% pending the approval of council. And so, there is thought put into when and if sustainable funding levels are restored, how that will impact the city of Colwood. Discussions are ongoing with our partner, our other partners regarding, let's just say, the future of West Shore Park and Rec, and how we can work together to ensure continued success of the recreation center.
So honorable chairperson, I would suggest then the answer is no, there isn't currently a contingency plan, particularly if a community as significant as Langford was to withdraw. But if I may follow up on the comment the director of finance made regarding increasing the, what, 2.5% increase? So where does that amount that's over-collected stay? Does it stay within the city of Colwood in a reserve fund, or does it flow through to West Shore Parks and Recreation?
Chris?
Through the chair. If by taxes we collect more than what the requisition ends up being, without a specific direction of council, it goes into the city of Colwood surplus. However, I would recommend, as the director of finance, to set the difference between what we collect for recreation and what we pay for recreation, aside as a reserve for that purpose.
And my final question, Mr. Chairman, is if the city of Colwood is over-collecting, thinking that there might be some adjustments financially needed in the future, and the West Shore Parks and Recreation Board just voted unanimously to hold costs where they've been since 2016, I'm getting kind of a mixed message there. And if city staff wants to be proactive and cautious for the future, I appreciate that, but to me, it doesn't show a lot of confidence in what the board has decided. And if I'm not mistaken, we have a member from Colwood on that board, and I don't really understand why I'm getting two messages. I guess one from the board that says, hey, don't worry, we're controlling costs, we're finding efficiencies, and I think that's very commendable. And on the other hand, I think being cautious with the financial future of Colwood's contribution to West Shore Parks and Recreation is also important to keep in mind. So perhaps a board member or someone could comment as to why we have two different approaches that seem to be at odds with each other.
Who wishes to? So, I mean, from what I'm hearing, there's a political reality in terms of holding the budget at zero, zero increase, but the city realizing that there may, there may be a future increase, wants to insulate the taxpayer from feeling that significant hit in one fell swoop. Would that be a fair comment?
Through the chair, yes, that's accurate, and simply put, there's just partners with differing opinions at the moment.
Okay, and a final comment then is, actually, I'm going to hold that for now, if I could. I'll come back to that later. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, bring it to committee. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have in front of me a paper that's the West Shore Parks and Recreation Society Operating Budget Summary for Budget Years 2017 and 2018. I only received this yesterday after asking for staff, and some of the things that concern me in here, for example, if we look under administration expenses, we see an increase from 2016 of about $316,000 to a 2018 budget of $492,000. That's about a 50% increase in administration expenses. I was wondering if you could comment on that.
And just to clarify, you're looking at the 2016 actual, the first column on the left?
Yes.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be based on actual expenses. In there, there'll be things like legal costs, staff training, and so on, that aren't fully expensed? And so that's where the, so they weren't fully, fully used in 2016, but they're still budgeted for because the expectation is that they would be used in future years. So that's where, if you're looking at the 2017 to the 2018 increase, the only increase in there is actually the contingency amount for the increased wage expectancy.
So that's 2017 budget to 2018 budget. I show a 13% increase.
Yes.
Is the extra contingency for...
It's extra.
Okay, and similarly, if we jump down to the human resources from 2016 actual to 2018, there's about a 25% increase.
And I can speak to that. The HR manager works part-time right now, but the position is funded full-time. So that, that is what resulted in a saving, so to speak, in 2016 and 17.
And finally, we jump to, for another example, a total maintenance budget, 3.9 million in 2016 to 4.5 million in 2018. Now, it doesn't look to me like the 2018 budget very much resembles the 2016 budget. And you tell us you're keeping the requisition at the same, at the same time you're increasing lines at 15, 16, 20%.
Yeah, and that'll be the same thing, that, because that's actual. So that just actually was spent for maintenance costs on that year, the actual budget, so they didn't, neither of us, or actually, were there, but that just means that certain projects were not completed, which is the same thing that's happened this fall. Unfortunately, when the revenue's gone down, certain budgeted aspects for the heat recovery system and so on were not undertaken because there wasn't the revenue to show it.
That's all the questions I have.
Yeah, and I apologize. I think part of the confusion is because it's, that's 2016 actual versus the 2016 budget amount, which I don't have in front of me.
Cynthia?
Thank you. I have previously sat on the West Shore Parks and Rec Board, and one of the projects that was in the five-year capital plan was the, I don't know if you'd call it replacement, but fixing the floor in the old arena due to the frosting issues and the permafrost underneath. And that's what I believe a lot of the reserve funds were to be directed towards, that you're considering using to balance the budget at this point in time. So what is the plan for the old arena floor in the future, if you use these reserves now to, to settle the budget?
Well, I guess the biggest piece of information that Grant and I would want to make sure everybody understood is, we would not be choosing to use the reserve. That is not West Shore Parks and Recreation staff's choice. You know, the original budget that we've put forward showed a 4.15% increase because we had no increase last year. And this has become, this has been taken out of our hands, and we've had political direction to hold the requisitions at zero. And so, the use of that reserve, we do with heavy heart, because it's not our choice, and it wasn't, it isn't what we think to be the best option. It's at this point, the only option that's been put forward, and has currently been approved by four other councils. So that, that sort of clarification on the reserve, because we don't want anyone to think that's our choice. And the second piece about the reserve is, there continues to be about $1.3 million anticipated if the arena floor is done. There's a number of projects that we're looking at, and we've earmarked approximately that dollar level for the arena. Again, we're waiting for the political environment to settle down somewhat, because we need to know sort of the future of the facilities as far as what might change, what might be added, what might be subtracted, et cetera. So we still maintain that as earmarked on our list for the reserve.
So it's been three years since I was on the board at West Shore Parks and Rec, and that was a planned project at that time. Can you tell me why the arena floor hasn't been done? Is there, is there some technical reason why it was problematic to do?
I think, it was actually planned before my time as well, so I don't know all of the details, but my understanding is that just around conservatism on the status of the floor, it didn't need immediate addressing. They've continued to watch it, and they will address it if and when needed. So I think they prepared for a project and are just waiting to do it when, when the time is right, and when the climate is right, so to speak.
So, thank you. I appreciate your candor and your feedback. I would be very concerned if any area of West Shore Parks and Rec is not being upgraded and maintained properly as it should be, and so I have great concern. And I understand you're in a difficult position, and you have to work with what, with what you're given, but I am very concerned that the capital improvements are not being done in the last three years at West Shore Parks and Rec.
And I, I think that's a, you know, that's a fair concern. I don't think, I know that they continue to monitor the state of the, of the arena floor, to ensure that it's... ensure that it's as safe as it needs to be.
Thank you. Rob?
Thank you. So I want to go back to Councilor Knoll's questions because you kind of threw me off and confused me a little bit. So if I'm looking at what he was looking at, and I'm looking at the 2017 budget, the 2017 budget never passed, and so reverted back to 2016 budget. So the 2017 budget is the 2016 budget, correct or incorrect?
So the only thing that reverts back to 2016 is the requisition of dollars that are collected. So we can't change our expenses on our revenues from year to year, and so we leave those in place. What we don't, if we don't get our requisition approved at the level we request, then we sit with a shortfall. So last year, for the first time, when it didn't get approved, we had a shortfall of $75,000 that we just worked, we just continued with. And then this year, the shortfall, again, holding at $2016, is growing to $227,000 because wages, particularly utilities, continue to increase. And in last year's situation, we had a decrease in revenue, as we've noted. So the budget figures for 2017, we didn't go in and adjust the expenses and revenue because we couldn't.
So in other words, just for clarification, I think this is where Rob's getting at, is although the requisition is the same, the individual light item amounts may fluctuate. So administration may go up, maintenance may go down, and there might be a few tweaks here and there, but at the end of the day, the dollar amount collected is the same?
For the requisition.
For the requisition.
Yes.
Any further questions? Jason?
Right, not sitting on the board myself. I guess our board members might be able to answer this for me. But have you considered reducing services instead of robbing your surplus or your reserves? Colwood, a long time ago, when I first ran for council, had a history of robbing their reserves to pay operating budgets, and it's the way to get behind the eight ball really, really fast. Subsequent councils really paid for that through having to increase taxes quite a bit. And I don't want to see that happening with our rec center. So have you considered actually reducing services instead of robbing your reserves?
We haven't been asked to do that at this point from our other members. And I think that this budget request is very much tied to the hope that a consultant's review will show us the way. And because the conversations happened at the same time, I think that there was some hope that if we go into a holding pattern for this year, we do a review, perhaps some answers would come forward. We had already, as we showed in our presentation, tried to make some reductions in staffing that we felt were efficiencies that we could live by and still offer the highest of services. But we haven't, we haven't been asked to do the service reduction at this point.
Seeing no further questions, thank you very much for your presentation. And we recognize that things are still very fluid, and we appreciate your continued work despite the political uncertainty and the pressure that the politicians are putting on, on U.S. staff. And so keep up the good work, and we'll keep our fingers crossed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go into 5.4, our presentation, Department Core Operating Budgets. Christopher, who's first up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair and Council. Again, I just wanted to reiterate that for the public that would like to follow along, just make sure you have the six-page handout that's been printed, reprinted, and put with the agenda. The essence of the information is the same, but this version should be clear of the arithmetic typos. So we'll begin today by going over the Public Works Department. And I have to say, I'm sort of excited to present the Public Works Operating Budget. Well, this is what I...
This is all Chris has, is like.
That's it. That's it. But the reason for it is the Public Works Department is a good example of the benefits of switching from an object-based budget presentation to a service-based budget. And the Public Works Operating Budget itself now demonstrates the services that are provided to the citizen in a more intuitive way. And so citizens are able to understand the good services that they get for their tax dollars. So Public Works being as complex as it is, it's an excellent example of that. So I will begin today. If you're following along, it's page 47 of the financial plan or page 77 of the agenda package, and we've got the Public Works Operating Budget before us. Overall, the financial plan recommends a decrease in the budget of 1.6%. And before I get into the details of how we've arrived, I just want to say a question that you or the public may have is, is that as a result of a service decrease? And the answer is absolutely not. The nature of the Public Works Department and the other divisions of engineering are such that labor is deployed in somewhat of a fluid way so it can be responsive to community needs. There is a work plan established by the Public Works Manager, and a lot of that maintenance is performed to those work plans. But the Public Works Department and its related divisions need to remain flexible so that if we have a snow event over the weekend, we can respond quickly to that. So you'll see in the subsequent budgets that this is simply a reallocation of where expected labor and other resources are going to be going for 2018. There's no service cuts whatsoever. So the first variance that I'll draw your attention to is a minus 7% decrease in Public Works Administration. Again, that's a large variance, but there's good reason for that. This year, we, again, with the improvement of our financial accounting software, we have gone and distributed the overtime cost to the various divisions. So instead of having the overtime cost for Public Works centralized in Public Works Administration, we've gone and allocated to the various divisions, including solid waste, spring cleanup, road maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. So that explains why a lot of that has been decreased. As well as we've discussed in the previous operating budget presentation, some of the costs in the Public Works Department are now located in a human resource, centralized in the human resource budget. For instance, first aid allowance, some safety training, and other related expenses. So we've moved some of that over to other budgets. So it's just simply a redistribution. Second variance I'll draw your attention to is a solid waste and branch drop-off variance, recommending an increase of 2.3%. And this is just, the reasons for this increase are the same as the reasons for the decrease in the Public Works Administration. We've simply allocated some of the overtime costs that we expect to be incurred to provide that service as well. So some of those overtime costs have increased the cost moving forward. Next variance that I'd like to discuss is the snow clearing. You will notice that snow clearing came in under budget last year, $123,000 when compared to $100, approximately $28,000. Yet we are proposing an increase to $134,000. And that's a difficult, this service in particular is one of the most difficult to predict. We've already seen, though, a number of snow events early on in the year, and so we put on our forecasting hat, and we expect that that increase would be needed. However, Malcolm Wood, we have no more snow events from here until December 31st. The Public Works Manager would redeploy those resources to other needed services in the So now I'd like to discuss in a little bit of detail some of the year-to-date versus 2017 budget variances. As you may be asking yourself, is the budget proposed for '28 necessary? The largest variance would be the road maintenance. This year, our year-to-date actuals are expected to be around $368,000 versus a budget of $516,000. And we're proposing a budget of $517,000 into 2018. The reasons for that variance are mainly twofold. First of all, the Public Works crew performs work on behalf of third-party providers as well. In this case, there is possibly $50,000 worth of work provided for Fortis, for some of the work that they need to undergo. And so the Crew, the Public Works Crew is used to perform those works, but they're completely reimbursable to the city, and so they're not reflected in the year-to-date totals because they've been reimbursed to the city. As well, you'll notice when we get to the Parks Department that the Parks Department is actually over-budget in 2017. And again, that's because labor was deployed to the parks and prioritized to parks last year in response to community needs and the growing needs in the neighborhoods. So essentially, that's a good example of how the Public Works budget can remain flexible to respond to community needs. And the last, the last variance that I'll discuss, and then I would just like to talk about some of the accomplishments and some of the plans for 2018, and then I open it up for questions, is the drainage variance, which we've discussed previously over email. So you'll notice that drainage year-to-date expenditures were almost $73,000 last year on a budget of $170,000. And the Public Works Manager has provided some good context for that. But essentially, it comes down to the fact that there was no storm drain infrastructure failures last year, which is uncommon and welcomed. So those resources were used elsewhere, particularly in parks this year. So looking back on 2017, I won't read every single accomplishment that's in the financial plan. That's for you to read at your leisure. But some of the very interesting things that the city underwent was there were over 200 yards of branch drop-off material recycled into reusable mulch for city parkway and landscaping. A completely proactive effort by the Public Works Manager to recycle that material and reuse it for the benefit of the city. There is also line painting conducted for all 95 kilometers of city road. I found that impressive, that line painting was conducted for all of the road that we have. And then, of course, there was a couple of speed reader boards located. I get to smile at one as I move into work every single morning. Looking forward to 2018, we, there's planned roadway crack sealing for approximately 22 kilometers of road. And this is an example, this is a specific example of how the Public Works Department is working closely with engineering to establish service levels for councils' review and approval. And it will establish minimum service levels for all of these services that we present today, and also allow room for, again, responsiveness and flexibility to community needs and concerns and unexpected events. So that is, the last plan for 2018 that I'm particularly looking forward to, because I'm a numbers guy, this is all I have, is hopefully achieving sustainable infrastructure funding for our general fleet replacement. And it turns out that our transfer to reserve for fleet replacements was well-funded to begin with, and we've recommended an increase to the fleet transfer so that we can be at a sustainable level. So that's certainly a positive when we look towards our asset management. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Christopher. Ross, do you have anything to add before we go to the public?
No, we can go to public.
And do you see the smiley face when you go through the speed reader signs too, just like our director?
Always smiling when I go through, yes.
Thank you. Open it up to the public. Okay, we'll go to committee. Jason?
Overall, very happy with it. Just one question. We painted all, whatever, 95 kilometers of lines. I guess that's an annual expense?
It's annual to some degree, how much I can allow them not to paint. So a previous year where there wasn't much snow fighting, I was able to allow them maybe not to paint the entire fog line of Machosum Road, which is quite a savings, and then we can add more traffic marking somewhere else. Last year, snow wasn't able to do that. So there's a bit of, I'm able to check the roads come the long line painting and maybe give them a chance to save some money if a line doesn't need to be painted. Last year, we had to do all of them.
And the follow-up question to that, as I've had public comment a number of times, that they would like to see a more reflective paint used on the lines. Highways used to do a wonderful job on really reflective lane markings, and it seems to have gotten worse and worse over the years. Is that a huge expense to go to a better paint?
Through the chair, I'm going to have to do some investigating into that. So you're not the first one to mention that the old paint used to be brighter. They still use a glass bead in their paint, but I've heard that from more than one, that it used to be more reflective. They did have to change the paint due to environmental concerns. They've gone to a different paint. I'm going to have to get some more material to read up on exactly why it isn't reflective. It does meet a standard, but like I say, I'm going to have to get you a little more information why. I'm with you, I'd like to see them shine like the light that they should shine like, yeah.
Thank you. I'd appreciate hearing back from you on that.
Rob?
Thank you. So I want to go back to road maintenance for a moment. So what I heard from you was we had a budget in 2017 of 516, and we actually spent 367. So we were down, we didn't spend about 150K. And then one of your comments was, well, that was because it was offset by revenues, for example, with Fortis. Normally, you wouldn't put a net in your actual costs. So like, I'm wondering why don't we actually see the real net cost and then see a revenue generation that offsets versus this number? Because this number actually confuses me now if you're saying this is net revenue.
Through the chair, it's a good question. And there's a very subtle difference in accounting standards between a revenue and a recovery. And in this case, it's essentially deemed not to be an expense to the city because it's paid for directly by Fortis. So that's what sort of drives that. It is possible in a budget presentation to, instead, essentially what we would do if I presented it the way that you're proposing is this would say $400,000 or $415,000, and then we would have an additional revenue of $50,000. What becomes difficult is predicting in the future because the work that we do for third parties is, it's really up to, it's really not within our purview, or it's not within our planning, so it becomes difficult to predict. And what you don't want to do is become reliant on the third-party funding because if it disappears, then all of a sudden, you have to increase your taxes.
My difficulty with, through the chair, my difficulty with that, though, is then I don't really know what our costs are versus cost recovery. And then, so I don't know any of these numbers. I have no idea if these numbers are actually accurate, dollars being spent by the city, or if we're actually spending twice this amount, but we're cost recovering half of it, right? So a lot of these numbers, I don't have any idea, and I, so I can't make an educated decision if it's smart to keep 516 in the 2017 budget and keep that same for the 2018 because I'm left questioning, well, I don't know. I don't know how much revenue's been generated off of all these line items. So it becomes a lot harder for me to distinguish that. So, which moves me into my second question about drainage. So drainage, and I just finished reading the email as well, so drainage, we only spent 60, or we still have 60% of that budget. And I understand that there wasn't any major catastrophes or anything. So, but are we suggesting that the 171 should be a historical number that has been in our line items for the last five years? Like, if I went into our old budgets, would I be seeing that? And so that stays consistent?
Through the chair, I would say in general, yes. The difficulty is that we have never accounted for a budget based on an activity level before until now. And those activity level were developed last year with the charge account reviews. So essentially, all we had for information for you and for the public was total public work salary as opposed to where that salary was being deployed. So this is the real first year to establish those yearly amounts, and it'll become very clear over a number of years.
Okay. Carol?
Just more of a comment than question. In 2018, the road repairs for Sukin Island to Island Highway... In 2018, there are road repairs for Sukin Island to Island Highway in there. Is that going to be done in conjunction with when transit's on the road? One, for efficiencies, and two, let's not do over.
If I may, through the chair, it's not that exciting. It's just patching and paving, very small inconveniences, single-lane traffic, just normal repairs. But this year, there's definitely a few more spots starting to show its life out there with the amount of truck traffic and whatnot we're getting on that road. So from a manager's review of the roads, I know we need to get out there this summer so we're not fighting potholes next winter. I would suspect somewhere between 50,000 or 60,000 we might spend just patching that road up. But there shouldn't be much in the way of traffic delays.
So targeted for the summer when most everybody's not running back and forth to school and things.
Cynthia?
Thanks. I may have heard wrong, so bear that in mind. But when we were talking about the snow clearing budget, and I think it's correct that we would want to increase our snow clearing budget as global warming does forecast, you know, greater stormy events and more turbulent up-and-down temperatures. But what I also heard you say was that if we didn't spend the money on the snow clearing budget, that we could redeploy that money somewhere else. And that causes me a great deal of concern because the, it doesn't seem to me, then, that council's input has really any impact in terms of, if that's not coming back to council to say, okay, we didn't spend this money on snow clearing, we'd like to do this instead, then basically, doing this budget has very little impact to how the money is actually going to be spent in Colwood. So rather than say that, you know, it'll be redeployed elsewhere, I think that money has to come back to replenish our reserves or do something, or at least needs to come back for some consideration. And that also is reflected, for me, in the Parks Department on the Parks and Trails budget, where, you know, we haven't expended the, or the actual has been greater than the budget was. And I think that's not, I'm not trying to crucify anybody, but it really does need to come back to council. We shouldn't be overspending what we've budgeted without any input from council as to what's happening. It either has to come from our surplus if we've overspent, and there's a good reason for that, and council needs to be informed. Or if we've underspent, also likewise, needs to come back. And I recognize that this is the first year of actually looking at how everybody's doing everything. But that is in excess of $62,000 that has been expended without, as far as I can tell, any input from council whatsoever.
Ross?
Through the chair, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but the financial end of it remains, it's more of the staffing. If we're not out clearing snow, then we're going to be distributing the staff elsewhere, not so much the funding elsewhere.
Chris?
If I may just add to Mr. Miles's comments, I completely understand exactly what you're trying to express. In my, best practices is with our budget is that when we are providing this to council, we are establishing service levels and an expectation from both council and the public that we will reach those service levels. And so, staff shouldn't be able to, on a whim, decide, well, no, I want to make the parks greener, and I won't take care of the roads this year. This is the first year, keep in mind that it provides a service level focus on it. My practice is to check in with council frequently, so quarterly reports. And if we are proposing or asking for any major shift in the budget, we go to council and ask for internal budget, an internal budget adjustment. Now, I have historically used my judgment to say, okay, I'm not going to go to council for a $2,000, you know, budget adjustment within Public Works because there needs to be, remain some flexibility to be able to respond to the community needs. But a $70,000 change, and it could impact service levels. And that's something that we should, we should check in with council. Now, just to provide a bit of context, remember last year, Mr. Miles and the Public Works Divisions were provided with an overall budget for staffing and labor. And he deployed them as, according to his work plans and according to community need. It's really, this is the first year where council will, by approving this, say, we want a certain amount of work to occur in each of these service areas. So I hope that provides a bit of clarity to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a couple of observations. I guess with the road maintenance, it's really heartening to see some total road rebuilds in Colwood because we haven't had that opportunity for a number of years. And in fact, we spent very little on significant road improvements, like road rebuilds. So I think that's a really nice place to be in. So I guess, just through a question to Ross or Chris, when we do the assessment, the asphalt assessment, will that have an impact next year in terms of road maintenance budget, maybe the allocation of, toward addressing some of the risks that may be identified through that assessment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the pavement condition assessment, which is on the books as a special project in the Engineering Department, which we haven't looked at, will absolutely establish maintenance levels, recommended maintenance levels and their urgency and the resulting service.
Thank you. And my other observation is with the drainage budget. A number of years ago, there was some significant risks that were identified, particularly in the Triangle Mountain area, where there were some culverts that weren't mapped, that were installed when highways was the approving authority. Afferston Place is a prime example of one that all of a sudden failed, and the city really didn't know anything about it. And we were left to scramble to repair and find funding. So I haven't heard anything recently about any concern, but I'm assuming that those time bombs are still a risk. And hence, we would want to keep that, the budget at a certain level to be able to address those risks.
Mr. Chair, yes. And if I may add, the Stormwater Master Plan, again, is an engineering project, which we'll review next week. And that would identify risks and also establish an appropriate amount for drainage as well. And so, part of the, part of the direction here is, this is the first year where we're establishing budgets on a service level. We have a Stormwater Master Plan that's going to help inform that. And if there's any material changes moving forward, we'll have some good documentation.
Thank you. Jason?
Just one further comment. With this new system, I think it's great. It's time we did some actual cost accounting of what things were actually costing us. But what I would like to see, and I'm sure would answer councillor Day's question, is maybe a quarterly report back to council on how we're doing on these line items. I know the staffing in the Finance Department has not been such that that's taken place on a regular basis, but I would love to see that returned.
One more question, and we'll move on to parks.
Sure. I just wanted to add, I sound like a cranky Nellie here, but I just wanted to say that I really value our public work staff. I think they do do a great job. Every time we drive through somebody else's construction zone, and it's not a Public Works guy holding up the sign, they're usually not as good. So it's always good to me when I go through some construction and I see it's our Public Works crew who's managing it. I know that it's not going to be a big mess-up. So I do really appreciate our staff, and I know we have a new system that we're going through. I'm just trying to point out some worries that I have going forward.
Chris?
Thank you. And I just wanted to respond to councillor Noel's comment, if you don't mind. Absolutely. A part of the budget process and timeline that we've asked for approval from council is quarterly reports. So that would include, there's no point in giving a first quarterly report because we haven't approved the budget by that time. Quarter-two report and a quarter-three report. And not only does that provide council with some pertinent, accurate information on the activities of the city, it also allows us to start budgeting in advance to what we're used to as well. Because it really lights a fire for staff to start considering the budgets as well. And we provide a projection in our quarter-three reports of what we think we're going to end up at the end of the year. And that will help us inform a budget early and more accurately. So yes, I just wanted to add that. That's absolutely on our agenda for this year. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Parks Recreation and Culture.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for those following along in the package, page 49 is where we'll begin, page 79 of the Agenda Package. I'm just going to make a couple of quick comments regarding the Recreation Center budget and the Library Budget, and then I'll launch into the remainder of it. So as I mentioned previously in my comments to the public, the Recreation Center budget, we're recommending a two, two and a half percent increase to the budget. And the reason for that, again, there's really two processes regarding the Recreation budget that council was involved in. First of all, they're asked to approve the Westshore Parks and Rec budget and provide that approval to them. And second of all, they're asked to approve a City of Colwood budget. And this is what is really being presented to you. The City of Colwood budget envelope is asking for a 2.6% increase. Reason being, we can see the impacts of the requisition being held at nothing with a 0% increase last year. They came back to us with a 4.1% request. Again, if we continue down that path, assuming things are the same this year, 6% increase next year, 8% increase. And that could put a lot of pressure on the taxpayers all of a sudden. Next thing I'll just mention about the Library Budget, you'll notice that the Library Budget proposed increase is 1.7%. You remember that in the presentation, the Greater Victoria Public Library was asking for an overall requisition increase of 2.9%. So the funding formula for the Greater Victoria Public Library is based on assessed values, 2017 assessed values. And our portion of the entire region's assessed values has decreased, which is why we've benefited and essentially have a lower increase than the average to the remaining municipalities. Okay, so now I'll just discuss the Heritage, the Heritage Budget. What does that encompass? So you're likely aware that the city owns St. John's Church and the grounds there. And so, there's some annual maintenance, that's always planned for that. Now, it shows a 5.4% increase, but in real-dollar terms, it's only $1,400. And that's really an allocation of overtime. But we're also recommending that the budget be maintained, even though last year, we were underspent in that area, mainly because there's some capital works underway, which are, there's some capital works that are being asked for approval in the capital budget, which we'll discuss next week. And we want to make sure that there's an operating budget to complement those efforts. The second variance that I'll discuss in the budget is the Parks Fleet Maintenance. Again, it forms a small portion of the overall Parks Department budget, which is why a fluctuation in the proposed budget there seems to be large, 11 and a half percent. But essentially, our fleet manager has a very robust, very detailed, and I've had a look at it, and I'm very impressed, fleet maintenance schedule and a fleet replacement schedule as well. And essentially, his labor and the materials and everything that goes with it are being used elsewhere. The city's fleet costs are distributed throughout the various divisions. So you see there was a Parks, there was a Public Works fleet. You'll see in the next budget, there's a sewer fleet, there's a fire fleet, and so on. And so, his work and the materials and costs that go into it are fluid according to that plan. Thank you very much. Oh, and sorry, before I continue, just to discuss some of the accomplishments and plans from the Parks Department from last year. So last year, two of the main accomplishments were the Havenwood Crosswalk that was constructed, and it included a connector to the Park Replace and Winthrop Road, and as well as the Splash Park installation at Colwood Creek Park. And there is plan, but it's pending council approval on the capital project to construct a parking lot at Colwood Creek Park. And as well, they're expected to create a street trees maintenance program in keeping with the city's municipal street tree bylaw and to complement our asset management plans. You also know it's special projects. There's a Parks Master Plan proposed. You'll notice this is a recurring theme in our budgets. We've got Stormwater Master Plan, we've got Pavement Condition Report, we've got Parks Master Plan. All of those are needed ingredients to create our asset management program. And next week, we'll go over the entirety of our asset management plan as opposed to piecemeal. But this would help inform the city when preparing long-term maintenance and budgets, as well as helping inform the city what the capital replacement costs of some of the park improvements are, and how to fund and plan for that sustainably. Thank you.
Thank you. Open it up to the public. Rob?
Couple of questions. First of all, just sort of a logistics. Why is libraries in parks?
Recreation. It's culture.
It's culture? Oh, is that, okay. And looking at what Westshore sent us, so on the hard copy, it's like page 27. And I'm just trying to come up with a realistic per capita. So if I took the 2.68, excuse me, 2.6 million plus 1.1 million on Westshore Park and Rec, coming with a total of basically 3.8 million, is that the realistic number that I would be trying to figure out what the per capita is compared to what they're doing on the rest of these? Because, you know, for example, Squamaw, ours, our per capita is $65, and the Squamaw's 473. So I think the numbers are off somewhere.
Through the chair, yes. I questioned that myself. It's a bit of a misnomer. First of all, the per capita is Westshore altogether. So you would have to figure out what the...
Well, I did. So ours is 1.1 million. So we threw that on into the 2.6 that's in our... If I'm looking at page 49 of what you provided on the Parks Department, Parks Department operating budget, I took that 2.6 million total for Parks, which included libraries, which I'm a little skeptical about, but I'll leave that in there for now. I just want to figure out the per capita. And then, adding the 1.1 would give me 3.8 million.
Through the... Yeah, if I may, through the chair, our total is 2.7, including the library. So you won't add it?
Right, no, I understand that, yeah.
Okay. But the other thing I wanted to add there as well is, they've taken the total population of all of Westshore. So you would need to know what Legford's, Machosum's, Highlands, Parks budget are as well to add in to figure out a comparable per capita.
Could, through the chair, to our CAO, if it's not too much of a waste of a time, is that a number that we could actually get so I could actually see comparatives? I don't want to direct staff to give that if you think that that's a useless number, but I would actually kind of like to understand it compared to the rest of the municipalities.
Through the chair, no, I think it's something we probably should have handy, given the recent challenges that we've had with criticisms about Westshore. The only way we can properly defend those statements is to actually have a good comparison of the total cost of Westshore and all of the other recreational facilities in the Westshore area, and compare that against the other municipalities. So I think as long as the numbers are easily accessible from the other municipalities, we should be able to do that.
Anything further? Anything further? Cynthia?
Thanks. Just a comment that I would like to see, rather than just the Recreation Center showing the 2.6% increase, I would like to see an amount going into a reserve fund for the Recreation Center so that there's less confusion just going forward.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. I guess one, Ross, on the park staffing component. Is it sufficient or being conservative? Because I know we, we continue to put a lot of pressure on the park staff in terms of increased maintenance standards.
Through the chair, Mr. Chair, once again, it's going to be the Parks Plan that's coming up and our service levels that we're creating this year to really determine that. So this will be a really deciding year. Yes, there's a lot of pressure to maintain the boulevards and streets with the staffing we have. It depends on the service levels you guys request of us. If we want golf greens at the side of the road, we're going to need a few more staff. It's, it's going to depend. So the, the master plan's going to help with that. At this point, we're okay. One more Meadow Park, no, you know, as that expands, it's going to be more and more challenging. The landscape designs that we pick, definitely challenging. The last few with the amount of maintenance, it's proven to be a lot more than we anticipated. So for 2018, we're in good shape. Moving forward, I'll probably going to have to grow.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess my, just my other comment regarding West Shore Parks and Rec is, although it's, it's a phenomenal facility that provides a hell of a value, I just worry that with the current political climate, that the facility is actually falling behind. And when I look at, because I have the opportunity to, to travel and visit a lot of recreation centers, especially the outdoor component, is, and actually, it's not necessarily a West Shore thing, it's an island thing. Like, it's really weird. There's a difference between the island Parks and Rec facilities and the mainland Parks and Rec facilities. And it, I see just how far behind the island is in terms of really good robust investment in, in facilities. And, and I, you know, I think to some respects, we, it's a bit of a detriment to, to the revenue that we could generate, because fields, as an example, fields are closed. And so during wet weather, so they're not generating any revenue versus, say, all weather fields that are open, downpour, not generating revenue continually. So, you know, I just worry about, about the state of the Recreation Center if we can't get our collective acts together. But, and I'm speaking from, as a parent as well, so anyways. Carol?
Just for in the plans for 2018 for our parks and area there, recently, we received a $5,000 grant gift towards pergola in there. And I see that we're looking for a parking lot at Colwood Creek Park. But is there any opportunity for that pergola construction as well?
Yes, through the chair. I've been working with Sandra. We're looking for some pricing on pergolas, for one. We were hoping to reuse a kind of an older rental one, but it wasn't going to look as nice as I think we need to have in the park. So Sandra is going to see what $5,000 will actually buy us in, in the pergola and the size. And then I guess we'll probably come back to council with that to decide. And then whether or not we're going to concrete the base. So it's going to see how far we can stretch that $5,000 or if we need to add to it if we want to make it nicer. But that was a spot we, we thought we'd pick.
Just as a quick follow-up on that, I know the pergola we built or that we got from the library, or excuse me, got from the museum that we put over at Herm Williams, that was like $100,000. Like, is it realistic that we think we can get something for like 5,000? And I know that one was a gift to us, by the way. So I, like, the city didn't pay 100,000 and it was just given to us. But I know they're expensive, like 5,000 seems very little.
Ross?
Through the chair. Sandra's currently working on pricing, so you're going to have to stop in and visit her, or I'll get, I'll get an email out to you guys, because I did ask her, I said, what will this, how big will this get us? What will it get us for that 5,000? And that's probably not going to include a nice concrete base below. So it depends what size. If it's 10 by 10, well, yeah, we can get $5,000 pergola. So we're going to, we're going to see where that will stretch to and give you a size and some options, and then we'll make a decision from there.
Yeah. And personally, from my perspective, I'd rather spend a few more dollars to get it done right, including the concrete base, and knowing how busy that park is now and how popular the Herm Williams Park pergolas are. Like, it's crazy. It's absolutely phenomenal how much interest has been generated. So I'd, I'd rather do it right the first time. Okay, not seeing any further questions. We will move on to, we're going to head to the sewers. Were there any other questions?
Oh, Al. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So moving on to page 81 of the Agenda package, page 51 of the handout. So I'm going to go through a number of the variances here and explain it in detail. I would like to come back at the end of the conversation to sewer user fees. I believe that this plan is bold. Let, let's say it's bold. There's a proposed 14% increase to, to sewer user fees. The main reason for that is to ensure that our transfer to reserves for sewer equipment and capital becomes sustainable. But that might not be palatable right away, so I'll, I'll propose a couple of options to council when we get back to there. So I'll begin with a 27% increase to local service area tax. This, as many of you are probably aware, the new parcel tax for the central sewer system is being, is being approved, and so we anticipate an increase there. You notice that, that is essentially offset by a decrease in this line item called transfer from operating reserve. So for the debt that we owe for these local service areas, we are paying from an operating reserve. Now that we can tax for it, we'll tax for it instead. So it's basically a shift in that Furthermore, I'll, I'll discuss the sewer connection fees. The sewer connection fee revenues and expenses, related expenses are based on previous year's activities, but they are subject to how many people connect. So although I've, in the financial plan proposes a 33% increase in sewer connection fees, the volume of, pardon me, it doesn't recommend a 33% increase to sewer connection fees, but a 33% increase to the volume of connections. Should that not happen, that's offset by the expenses that we will not incur. So the fact that there's large variance here, it shouldn't be worrisome to the, to the public or to council. Should we, should we not receive that revenue, it'd be offset by expenses not incurred. Other variances that I'll, I'll discuss here are pump station maintenance, recommending increased funding from $142,000 to $157,000, and that's a 10% increase. And that's simply the number of pump stations that we have have increased nearly 10%. So it's very much in line with, with the new pump station that we got on Ocean Boulevard or...
Allen Dale.
Allen Dale, pardon me, yeah, Allen Dale. Okay. Next, transfer to reserve capital. So this is really what is driving the increase to the fees here. We, annually, we budget to transfer whatever sewer enhancement fees we receive into a reserve for the sewer enhancement. But you see, it's increased to almost $86,000. That's the amount of increase required to fund our sewer capital equipment and infrastructure sustainably, which is what is driving the sewer user fees. So now, going back to the sewer user fee discussion, a 14% increase is proposed in this budget would result in approximately $25 increase for the sewer user fee to the average residential property. So there are many options with respect to this. We, a more phased approach between two and five years might be more palatable, but the $25 annual impact, to give you an idea of, of what a phased approach would do. And all we would do is simply reduce our transfer to reserve capital to compensate for that. And over time, we would get to a sustainable level, which we're not currently at. So we can spend a couple more years getting to a sustainable level. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Open it up to the public. Committee? Rob?
You've created a monster here, Chris, because I'm going to ask this question on every line item now. So can you tell me on, on the operating expenses, is there any offsets that are in there that I don't see?
Through the chair, no. I was, I was going to mention to you before that the Fortis cost recovery is the only material cost recovery in the budget.
The entire budget.
The entire budget. The only material, correct, the only material one. And you notice that these are actually revenues, they are actually revenues in the budget, so.
Right answer.
Thank you.
Yeah, I am very concerned with the gigantic jump in the transfer to reserve capital in one year. I mean, you're basically going from, well, almost tripling what you're putting in. And I would really like to see more justification behind that number. I would favor, if that is the number, easing into it rather than doing it all in one fell swoop, because being a sewer user and paying the sewer user fee, I mean, 25% might, $25 might not sound like much, but when you add that on top of what the Colwood tax lift is and the CRD tax lift is and so on and so on and so on, it, it all adds up in the end. So I would really prefer to see a justification for that number.
Through the chair, if I may. The, the difficulty with this is that all of fleet replacement was funded through taxes prior to this year. And that's why you're, on a proportionate basis to the sewer budget, it seems like a lot more. So for instance, the general fleet in the, in the, which is funded by taxes, a $20,000 increase equates to a small amount in the overall property tax budget, but that's not the case here. So best practice and good principle with sewer utility is that it should be self-funding. That includes all the equipment and future replacement of that equipment. And I, and I have to admit that that approach isn't universal among municipalities. It's, it's simply not. And, and on top of that, sustainable funding levels is certainly not, certainly not consistent among or employed by a lot of municipalities. So this is a significant shift, both in what is funding it versus taxes and the amount. And I completely understand that.
Cynthia?
Thanks. My question was on the same issue, and I may not have completely understood your explanation the first time through, but basically, since it's a transfer to reserve for future capital expenditures, and I do completely agree that we need to get to a sustainable level. And I also have heard from people in the community that it's been very expensive for people who've, you know, needed to hook up to the sewer system for one reason or another. And then on top of that, you know, had the sewer user fees to pay as well as the, as the ongoing cost for supporting the system. So I'm just supporting reaching sustainability in a more gradual manner, so that it's maybe stepped over a couple of years or three years to, to reach that fully sustainable level, because it really isn't anyone's fault that the system hasn't had sufficient funding portion to it. It's more us catching up with our own financing. And I think a more gentle approach is going to be easier on our taxpayers who have to try to figure out how to come up with the money.
So can I just clarify too, the, the transfer to reserve capital, that's a different line item than us moving the Lagoon Pump Station, correct? That, that's, that's a special project?
Through the chair, that would be a capital project, yeah.
That, that's a capital project. And we're, and sorry, I missed the first budget meeting. Did we go over special product, projects on the first?
Through the chair, we did go through special projects as those are operating, but we haven't been through the capital, and that's a capital project.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Christopher?
Can I just ask? It appears to be that there seems to be a general consensus to come up with a more graduated option with a sewer user fee. I'll take that as general direction unless I hear otherwise, and I'll, I'll bring forward a different, a different option with a final version.
I'm not seeing any objection to that. Cynthia?
Well, just, just the one. My, my wish for the graduation was for the transfer to the reserve capital, for the sewer user fee, because we're talking about, about approximately $25 per average household. I'm more okay with that, only because the sewer user fee is going into actually, it's not going into a capital reserve. It is paying for services now, unless I misunderstood that.
Through the chair. No, the sewer user fee would be funding the trans, part, part of it would be funding the transfer to reserve.
So I stand corrected, and I'm fine with phased-in approach then.
You're fine with phased-in approach?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm not seeing any objection to, to a phased-in approach for that. So staff will make the, make the adjustment based on the phased-in approach. Okay. Any further questions, staff? Seeing none. That concludes that. We will go to our final, final public participation.
For some reason, I like this microphone better than the other one. I'd just like to, to comment how impressed I am with the format of this budget. I mentioned that earlier to the Director of Finance, and I just wanted to reinforce that. It's nice to see members of this committee asking lots of questions. Last year, I didn't really get that impression that that was happening. And I think it's this format that's definitely driving people to think about the service levels behind the numbers. So I just wanted to say thank you very much to the finance people for bringing this information forward in a way that even I can understand the basis of it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. I echo that wholeheartedly. Al?
Al Hood, I'm part of the public, but I also pointed to the West Shore Parks Board. And I really enjoy being part of the Parks Board, and I think the West Shore Rec is a great place. I agree with your comments. I don't think we ask enough of it, rather than asking less of it. I think we should be asking more of it, but helping out and getting more for it. Over the years, it's been a very flexible and efficient way of running a facility. They've got the best resources around town anyway, because as far as playfields and that sort of thing go. But it's getting older, and it's been left to sit, and everybody's said, yeah, we've got a great facility. Well, we had a great facility. I don't think it's running down, but I think it's being passed. And I think the public and all five owners, because the five owners make the decisions, not Sandy, she's been told what to do. Five owners have to sort out what you want to do and, and let us know. Because I think you've got people there that want to do a good job and are just waiting to, to hear what they're supposed to do. That's all I say.
Yeah, thank you for that. You're bang on. All right, we will move on. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February the 27th, same time, same place. So can I have a motion to adjourn? Bye-bye, Jason. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.